I'll go ahead and call the Facilities and Operations Committee meeting to order. We can just go by and do some introductions. We'll start with my left.
Liz Lars, Contracted General Counsel.
My name is Ryan Kinsler. I use he/him pronouns. I'm here as your Frasier Consration for the Bond Accountability Committee.
Awesome.
I'm Danny Cage. I'm the student representative to the committee.
Welcome. I'm Gary Hollins. I am the Chair for the Facilities and Operations Committee.
Amy Constanford, member.
Daniel, CEO.
Carol Rocha, Detective Assistant.
Jay Proctor, Communications Department.
Awesome. So today we have three items on the agenda. We have a couple reports and a acceptance of a new BAC member. And so I will swing it over to Mr. Ben Young.
Yeah, and I'll just go ahead and turn it over. Our first item is quarterly update from the Off-Schoolization. And online, we have our Senior Director of OSM, Marina Crestwell. Take it away, Marina.
No rush today, no rush. Wink, wink.
We have no presentation, just the written report that I've provided to you with a lot of materials. The quarterly report has all of the materials from two BAC meetings prior to this, October and November. Just a little bit of shifting around of dates, and we ended up looking like they're one right after the other. But October 5th, we had our BAC meeting focused on modernization projects. On November 29th, we focused on our infrastructure from the 2020 bond, our capacity projects from 2020, and health and safety projects from 2017. And we have shared all of those materials with you as part of our quarterly report. You can go and see the project status updates for each of those. Couple highlights, no news is good news on our modernizations, which is to say that Lincoln is moving along on schedule. Still forecasting savings in the budget. Benson and MPG are also under construction on schedule. We have been discovering over and over and over again underground dry wells at MPG. So we are definitely looking at our schedule for MPG, but we are continuing to work with that. And we do not foresee any impacts to the school year at this time.
So the acronyms, because I know we got some new folks, can you just explain what some of those are for folks?
MPG is the Multiple Pathways to Graduation Building that is being built on the Benson High School campus.
Thank you.
As far as our 2017 health and safety, we, as we've reported before, there are only a couple areas that we were still working on there. That are, that's their lead paint, really had minor punch list items with security. And we're continuing forward with our water quality work as well. We are looking at our budget forecast in lead paint, water quality. We anticipate getting savings back from those, and we will direct those to other health and safety scope related work. But we're still looking at what those numbers are, and so we're not quite ready to bring forward a recommendation on how to reallocate those funds within the other health and safety categories. On the 2020 program.
Marina, can I ask a question about, you specified lead paint and water quality. Does that, and that, the funds maybe that were allocated, that maybe some of the funds may be allocated somewhere else. Does, does that mean that we're confident the lead paint and water quality issues at all schools have been addressed to the standard that we set?
So what that means with lead paint, we had a specific list of areas that we needed to complete, and we will complete the entire list of areas plus some. For water quality, we have, of course, we've talked pretty extensively about the water filtration program that we have put together. And we are not just meeting what we promised, we are actually exceeding it in terms of the quality of the water that is being provided. We are completing that work. We've got a little bit of outstanding work that we're going through currently. We anticipate just a very minor amount of work in January, potentially a little bit lingering into February. And then we will be complete with everything we promised to do and significantly under budget.
Great, great. I love hearing that.
We do too. On the 2020 bond program, we've been doing more than just scratching the surface. One of the things that I pointed out to our BAC members at the last meeting is that between September 1st and November 1st, we expended $22.7 million. That was in addition to the $16.5 million that we spent with 2017 funds in that same time period. So in a two-month time period, we, we put $39.2 million out into the community. We are working very fast and furious to get our projects completed. And so you will see, if you look at any of the project status reports for the 2020 program, there are a large number of projects in progress already, and we have been moving those forward as quickly as we can. One thing of note, in 2020 capacity, we have completed initial Phase 1 of construction with Harrison Park Middle School Conversion. We are expecting to come in front of the board with a request to approve an alternative procurement for Phase 2. That is because we have, as part of Phase 2, we're going to be doing a complete mechanical system replacement in addition to substantial work within classrooms, within the gym, and in a number of different areas. And that work is, it, it has the potential to be extremely disruptive. We would like to ensure that we have a contractor that can understand the scheduling complexity, the ability to mitigate impacts. And so we'll be looking for something other than a low bid. We expect to see that coming forward in January. So it's just a little bit of preview that that's going to be heading your way.
Can I ask a question about Harrison Park? So when we earmarked about the $10 million in the 2020 bond for that middle school work, part of it was obviously in southeast, just opening up Kellogg, which was a great new facility, but making Harrison Park also an attractive middle school program since those students hadn't had a middle, hadn't had a middle school experience for, well, that area for like 15 years. Are there, have we cataloged or do we have a way to share with the community the sort of more student-facing improvements we've made? I think it's great we're getting, you know, a full mechanical rebuild, but the things like the gym, the classrooms, any elective spaces. I know we have a covered bike area that was just recently put in, but in a way to share like, hey, PBS is making an investment in making this school ready for middle schoolers as it opens next?
Yes, we have been doing those communications as well. We've had town halls. We have had community meetings and shared that information. But to be clear, we've completed one phase at this point. In that phase, those were items that we could complete in a summer, and so there were limitations to what we could actually get done in a single summer. What students thought as they came into the building at the start of the school year were essentially a refreshed entry area. I say refreshed, it's a little bit more than refreshed. We certainly did address, you know, finishes on the walls and the floor, lighting. We also added visibility from the office, the administration office, into the front entry, which previously did not exist. You had to walk past wall and around a corner and into a door to get into the administration office. Now there's actually windows into the entry area, and it's easier access into that office as well. That office did get, as part of revising that area, we refreshed some of the materials in that office too. Did some work in the cafeteria as well, and of course, some things outside, including, you know, as you mentioned, bike shelter and some other work outside. That was relatively minor. We do expect to have significantly more work than mechanical system. We highlight that simply because of the complexity of it, but we are going to be doing a lot more work that will be visible to students, to staff. So we will see new lighting, we will see obviously new paint. We will see new flooring materials, we'll always see refreshed restrooms. And then there are some changes that we're making, in particular, in accessing the gym and the secondary gym. We will be making some changes to locker rooms and improving our all-gender access to restrooms and locker rooms. And so there's, there's actually quite a bit of work that is involved. And we do expect it to take two years to complete all of that work. That said, the, the cost of everything that we know has gone up. I think we've, we've said that pretty frequently. I'm pretty sure that's no surprise to anyone. Much as we would love to make this look like a brand-new school, it's not a brand-new school. We are doing everything we can while still trying to be fiscally responsible. And yet, you know, we're, we're still putting a significant amount of investment into the property to, to make it not just meet middle school ed specification, but also to be really a clean, bright, fresh new space for students.
Super appreciate it. It's going to be great. The more we can, you know, information flows to us that we can share with the community. You know, parents right now are making decisions, and students are going to go to middle school next year, and home year. And I think having that to show the investments is super important. And I'm delighted to hear there's so many student-facing improvements happening at that school.
We are definitely excited about the improvements. We're, we're wishing that the inflation costs were not what they were. And that's, that's probably, you know, a good note to kind of put out there for all of our projects. This is definitely something that continues to impact us. I think we've all probably read in recent days that there, there's a lot of belief that inflation might be starting to level out. We're hoping to see it level out a little bit more over this next year. That said, we still, we still have very high prices coming in. We are still seeing some supply chain issues. We're particularly concerned about equipment, lead times for electrical equipment and mechanical equipment. And so we are working diligently to come up with creative solutions to that and hoping that we can continue to stay on schedule with the projects that we'd like to complete over this next summer, particularly for our mechanical projects where we need to source that equipment. In some cases, what we're hearing is 44 to 50 weeks ahead of time.
Oh, one of the things I was wondering, I can't remember, but does, do PPS have a goal on ADA accessibility?
So we are specific to the bond. We do have funding set aside. We had funding specified in the 2017 bond for accessibility improvements. We have utilized most of that funding already. For the 2020 bond, we also set aside funding very specifically to address main-level accessibility to meet ADA requirements. So that work, when, when we talk about main-level accessibility, that's a number of different types of things. So it can include everything from pathways through the parking area to get into the building, to handrails, to access to classrooms, to restrooms, to ensuring that we have accessible restrooms on the main level. There's a fair amount of work going into that. We are working on that as well. And there's actually, in the packets, there is an update in the 2020 bond updates for the November meeting. You will find one specific to ADA. You will also find one specific to the special education learning environment improvements. And if there are no other questions, I don't have any other updates. And it looks like that is perfect timing for our BAC.
I would say, I just wanted to add a few reports, Marina, that I had the chance to go tour Benson Construction Site, and I would encourage everyone to do that. I'll take you, Tom. It is mind-boggling, just the, the degree of complexity, the sheer size, the number of people on the job. And everybody on the job says it is the most complex project they've ever worked on. Anderson says that flat out. And the other really, really cool thing, which I told Gary last night, is there are a ton of Benson grads working on the job in all kinds of roles and trades, and that's pretty great. So it's, it's, I encourage everybody. It's, it's cool. It's, it's amazing.
For some reason, I thought it was 4:30. I got here before 4:30. When I got in the car, I realized I was like, I immediately called Dad.
This not reflective of the quality of your entire tenure?
As I said to Dan on the phone, what a way to finish.
Hey, in the previous 10 years, I don't recall this big for Tom, so.
No, not too often. Anyway, all right, well, so I'm here to present the report for the BAC. And this last period, we met twice. We met in October and reviewed the modernization projects. And then we met again in November to review the 2017 health, safety, and the 2020 bond capacity and infrastructure. And then we also got a update on the progress of the, of the planning recommendation that I believe has come to you for Jefferson, which was. So per the report, you know, we have, we've been tasked to make sure we're, the OSM and the school district is, you know, kind of carrying out what was intended within the bond. And so there's a number of things that we focus on. One is kind of the scope of, you know, what the intention of the bond. And clearly, they're doing a good job of delivering what was intended for the, for the, for the three bond programs to date. The budget is probably the area we focus the most on. Fortunately, they got through the pandemic and everything, and all the budgets look great right now. It appears there's going to be a significant underrun in the 2012 bond. You know, they, they still have some reconciliation of compensable costs between the bond as well as some other funding sources that were also obtained to support the bond program. But it looks like there will be some funding left over to maybe address some, some things that maybe had VE'd or I know in the 2012 bond, we didn't necessarily accomplish everything we had hoped to accomplish with the roofing and some of those other projects, although I'm guessing we're making progress in the other programs.
So how, how will we determine that before closeout of 2012? Because one specific question I have is, you know, I saw your note, Marina, about the, the shift of MPG from 2017 to 2020. So I would think that, that with, with program contingency left over from 2012 before we, we closed that out, would we, I mean, you could argue that it should go back to Benson because Benson was underfunded to begin.
2012 is not Benson.
Oh, 2017, right, got it.
I was going to get to those two.
Got it, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, but 2012, yeah. And, and I know there were some serious, I haven't been around to all of them. There were some serious VE efforts early on by Franklin and Roosevelt.
Quick question. We have a new.
Oh, value engineering.
There you go. Thank you.
Been so used to the jargon, I forget about it. I don't understand what I'm talking about. But in any case, there may be some opportunities for, to maybe correct some things in this, in those schools that maybe didn't work out the way you had planned. But I guess that's, that's for you all to decide, once you kind of know how much funding is, is available within the 2012. Right now, between all of the budgets, it's fairly sizable. They're forecasting a fairly sizable amount.
Like what?
2012 was $438. Now, there's, you know, there's, there's $30 million of other funding that came into that bond program. So how much of that is overrun, underrun against the $30 million versus how much is underrun against the original bond?
That came in from, from what? From bonds?
Grants, other sources that came in, you know, and we've done that, you've done that with all of your programs. If you look at the, if you'll look at the report that we get, you'll see the original budgets for the, what was approved in the, in the bond measures, and then you'll see other funding sources that they've been able to do various means. But they're all rolled together in, in one overall project. So when we, when we see that it's underrun, we don't know how much of that is underrun within 2012 versus how much is an underrun within the other funding sources. And that's something that, that, you know, once they get everything closed out, they'll be in a better position to be able to talk more specifically about, okay, we have this much money available left within the 2012. And I suspect there's, they'll, they'll be working on some potential projects that would still fall within the, the intent of the bond program that you could still move forward with. But there, it's a little early for that right now. The good news is, it's not the reverse, where you could be forecasting 400,000 overrun. So I would say it's pretty positive.
It, it would be good to make sure there's a, a user experience component to that process of prioritizing what projects need attention, because we all know that there are some things that weren't necessarily value engineering, but just didn't quite work out as intended in those original projects. So it'd be good to really talk to people in the buildings about what those are.
Yeah, and that's not uncommon.
Yeah.
The 2017 and 2020, right now, I'm looking at them together because of the overlap between Benson. So combined, they look great. And I, and I would say the projects, the 2017 projects, you know, Lincoln, Kellogg, McDaniel, all are coming in under budget. So there's, right now, there's a projection of about, between the three of them, about a $10 million underrun. Right now, Benson is tracking a schedule. They've gotten through the areas maybe with the highest risk of cost. What they had shared with us. So that's, that's encouraging that they got through that phase without any significance. So right now, Benson is looking pretty good as well, so, you know, for the current budget. And then the overall 2020, you know, the jury's still out on Jeff, because we're still, you know, but regardless, if you look at the combined budgets between 2017 and 2012, or 2020, there's currently forecasting about $14 million right now underrun. So, and there's a, that still doesn't account for a fairly large program contingency that isn't necessarily been determined how that's going to be spent. So I would say financially, the project, the programs are in great shape based on what, what we've seen. Specific to the, to the health and safety, that was $150 million that was planned to be spent. There's still about 28, 22 million, almost 23, that hasn't been allocated yet. But, you know, I'm sure that will, as they move forward, they'll take care of that. Likewise, in the capacity and infrastructure, there's still $195 million that hasn't been allocated yet. So, and, you know, they're running into some challenges with supply chain and some things. So there may be, there's potential for some things not getting, not accomplishing as much as they had planned because of funding. But certainly, if the, the overall budget has sufficient funding, they're more than likely, they can still complete everything that they intended to. Specific to scope, I think I kind of mentioned they're so far so good. The challenging one this, this, this last two years has been the 2020 with curriculum and the, even though we didn't review, but, you know, there's some compensatory issues with those. I think they sorted all those out.
What do you mean?
Well, not all of IT work is compensable under a bond.
Right.
Similarly, not all curriculum is compensable under a bond.
Oh, like the professional development?
Yes. So, so at first, you know, it took them a while to kind of sort all that out. And I think they've got a pretty good handle now on what's bond compensable and what's not, and whether you may have to get other funding to pay for those. So.
Do you, on the reports, maybe it's in these, I didn't, I didn't see it, but it may, it could be in there. But for, for example, take either IT or curriculum. Does it show up in your reports the total amount that's being spent? And then has a, like, differentiated out of what's paid for by the bond?
It is in the reports, Marina. I, I don't go into that detail. I kind of try to summarize it. But yes, the reports that we receive from Marina differentiates, you know, other funding sources for, you know, both for curriculum and, and for the IT that are intended to fund the non-compensable work.
Could I step in real quick on that, just to provide a little more context? Just to be clear, the Bond Program Administration Report, we do report out on curriculum and technology as part of that. And we do differentiate between bond funds and other funds. That said, we, within those reports, we only utilize information that we have in eBuilder, which is our system. Curriculum has moved their non-bond funds out of eBuilder. So they're working solely through PeopleSoft, and we are not reporting those funds on our Program Administration Report. However, when they provide their curriculum-specific project status report twice a year, they bring with that report all of the information about their non-bond funds. So I just want to clarify, if you want an update on their non-bond funds, you'll need to do it from Project Status Report, which the most recent one should be from September. I'm going back in my head, but I can certainly find that information and send it to you. We should also have this on our website.
Great. And you're saying twice a year.
Okay. Regarding performance on schedule, the, the only projects in the, in the bond that were, kind of had specific schedules were the big modernization. The other programs, the schedules are kind of developed depending as they get sculpted so far. And so, so for the modernization projects, so far, they, you know, they've made every one, they, you know, maybe a little work to be done during the school year, but that's not uncommon with a project of that complexity. So schedule has been, performance has been great. So schedule has been, performance has been great. The other projects have been, you know, most schedules have been adhered to, but, you know, there are supply chain issues, some other things that are occurring right now that are complicating the schedules for some of these health and safety and capacity projects. But they're, you know, they're doing their best to try to anticipate what those might be, and once they get them planned, then they, they've generally been pretty successful in delivering them on the schedules that they establish.
Are we having any of those over the dead late that aren't getting any bidders at all?
I think we've seen any recently that have had any bids.
Carryover a year maybe.
Yeah.
Some roofing projects, for example. I mean, they're not, they're not, from an overall bond program, they're not, I wouldn't say as big a deal as if you didn't open the high school on time. They're just, they're unique, small projects, yes, a different bidding client, contractors you're dealing with, you have only a certain window you can work on many of the projects. So they're not as easy, I mean, they're not, there are some, some challenges with them that we have a big general contractor managing a big program, that they're in a better position to kind of manage through those, those things than a smaller contractor. And that's kind of what they're experiencing here. We didn't really review any, go into any detail on the audits in the last two meetings. They, we do, we do receive the information on the audits. They're, you know, for the most part, most of the audits, at least the past audits, the majority of everything has been addressed. There's a couple of little outstanding issues. I think we had agreed that in this coming year, that there would be an opportunity for the VAC to maybe dive in a little bit more with the audits to kind of figure out, well, how can we like, you know, like the first audit, I remember that one, maybe it's time that we should have everything off the list on that one. But, but as Marina will attest, some of these recommendations aren't as simple as they would seem, given, you know, for a variety of reasons, and I, and I can appreciate that, having been in her shoes before. The other thing that we focus a lot on is business equity, equity, performance and workforce equity. The business equity is, is improving. We're still a little below the goal, but the encouraging news is the last, last 12 months, it's at 17%. So we're really close. So that's, that's a good sign, which would indicate that the contractors and the staff are really doing their best to try to, you know, hit those targets. Likewise, on the workforce equity, we're, we're, you know, exceeding the goal. The female participation is a little low, but from what we understand, that's pretty much consistent with what other agencies are finding that have similar goals. So not surprising, there's a lot of work, a lot of probably being made up in that area. It's going to take a while before we see, you know, higher numbers, I think.
Is that number, I mean, I'm not sure how much lower you can get, that 5%, is, has that number changed at all? Is that, that's overall workforce on the projects?
Yeah, on the, yeah, I think it looks at both. No, workforce only looks at the construction side, if I'm not mistaken. Because it focuses primarily on apprenticeship goals. That's the easiest way to track, and I don't think you're tracking total workforce participation.
It's just construction.
Just, I mean, we're not tracking all of the workforce, or are we? I'm trying to read them.
Is it based on apprenticeship?
Or is it just?
Numbers?
That's not just Marina, those are the details.
The workforce equity, that, we have three components to workforce equity at PPS. One component is apprenticeship, which is a hard requirement number that our contractors are essentially required to have a certain percentage of apprentices. Then, beyond that, we have two other categories that are minority workers and female workers. And that is not specific to apprentices, that is also journey level workers. And it is really tracking goals to get to a certain percentage of participation from either minority or female. And there are different goal numbers for each of those. We have done a, we are generally doing well with the minority. We are exceeding our apprenticeship. The challenge has been the female workers, and that challenge is consistent across all of the public agencies in the Portland area. The 5% is consistent, and it's actually consistent across other agencies as well.
It's, I know the challenge, I had the same challenge when I was, when I was in one place. And it's, the key, based on, you know, my involvement way back when, is figuring out how to develop the pipeline. It starts in the schools. It's one sir, and, and some of the information that some groups we looked at, it's, it's, there's a lot of interest at the grade school level, in STEM and all these things, and in junior high, all of a sudden, a lot of that changes. And so by the time they get to high school age, you've lost them in many cases. At least that was the information that I was made available. So the key is how do you keep that momentum going in the junior high, like you could do with sports and some of the arts and other programs that support, keep kids involved. And so that's where, obviously, you have a tremendous opportunity to help improve those numbers over time. They're not going to happen overnight, but that's my two cents, based on my experience. It's just, it's hard. And along with that, that's kind of leading up to my last part of the report, we had a number of recommendations. Probably noticed, we had a guest come to our meeting to talk about, primarily she wanted to talk about the incident that happened at Benson. But also, she had some, some ideas that we all support towards kind of improving some of these things, we kind of carry over. And so one of them is the safe workplace environment. I knew that, I know that was an area of interest with Kaniji. I know from my experience that that was a challenge, keeping apprentice on the job because they weren't treated very well. And so to me, that's, you know, really important, that contractors continue to stress, and that there's some, some mechanism to kind of judge how they're doing. And I don't know, that's not, I mean, it's easy to say, probably not an easy thing to do, but obviously, it's, it's crucial to growing your apprenticeship numbers and growing your apprenticeship numbers. If they're not treated well, it's not a safe work environment, you're going to have tough time keeping those people in the trades.
Is, do we have a point person within OSM who really works with those apprenticeship programs, or is it just project, specific project personnel, a project-to-project basis?
So we have hired somebody who is working with our business equity, workforce equity, and career learning work. That person is still, you know, getting up to speed on all the many different components of those different programs. But I did want to point out that we are actually working, they are working with purchasing and contracting on respectful workplace language to be added to our contracts. And so we anticipate that will be getting rolled out very shortly. I have language in my inbox, in fact, that I am supposed to be reviewing this week.
And who is this new employee?
You know, I'm going to say his last name incorrectly, and so I'm almost afraid to do that, but it's Avatar Stunavigora, I believe. And I'm just, I'm so terrible with names, and I'm almost embarrassed, so.
It's all good, thank you. I'm glad that we have that person on board.
Me too, and he's actually working very hard to, to address some of the things that we've been talking about. So we're looking forward to bringing him to things forward to, to the committee at some point here in the upcoming year.
And in, like, in that job description, is there a, is there a specific connection with our career and technical education people within the Office of Teaching and Learning?
The job description itself is not specific to that. However, we are looking at how we can develop the program to, to be a little more reflective of what we do within OSM. We do work with the career and technical education folks with their database, but frankly, OSM has always kind of gone above and beyond in terms of how we manage student engagement with our consultants and our contractors. And so we want to put together a more formalized program within OSM that allows us to, to really kind of be more creative and, and think about it more intentionally as a department, as opposed to each individual project working through things on their own.
Yeah. I think that's really important.
I agree. And I, I mean, just to note that from our perspective, we are, what we want more than anything else is to get more students working in design and construction. Like, that is, that is the nature of what we do, it's, it's what we love, it's what we are passionate about, it, it's what helps our, our industry move forward. And so it is near and dear to our hearts, and you will find that all of our project managers work hard to engage students as part of the projects and to give them the experiences to determine the future of our career field that they want to go into.
Okay, a couple other recommendations that she had suggested that we would come up with is, you know, to the extent that you can, I know statutes don't always allow it, but where you have a contracting process that has a competitive proposal-type approach as opposed to just a hard bid, that perhaps there's workforce equity criteria as one of the, part of the evaluation in selecting.
Absolutely.
Contractor. Obviously, you can't do it on all contracts. And then we were thinking that there would, some way to get kind of periodic updates on how are we doing with the apprentice, workforce, and diversification. And we just see rolled up numbers, I don't know if you get any detail, but I think it might be, so you see, you know, more, a little more breakdown, not every, not every report, but periodically, just to say, well, here's how we're doing, as opposed to just this one little number. You had mentioned this earlier, I mean, the, you know, how we're going to, what's the process for the unutilized funding? That needs to be set up. We don't normally see the risk log, and so it might be beneficial for periodically to, for OSM to share that in some fashion. It was confusing a little bit at times when we would see forecasts with an under run, but then we'd say, oh, no, and there's contingencies they're holding on to because we have this, this risk. It's like, oh, okay, well, that's good, glad you have the risk log. And I think it would be, might be useful to, just to kind of have a sense of what are the risks?
Right.
And how do they affect the?
Because each project, I mean, I've been on a project steering group, and they have that, and they, you know, yeah, that's very explicit, like what's, what's left to do on the job, and what's the level of risk there to the contingency.
And then I think Dan's already been working on it, but I had to say it one last time, and that is recruitment of VAC members. I understand you have one here today. But yeah, it's been a little frustrating this last year. There's really only about four of us that have been regularly attending the meetings. And as it turned out, all of our terms were up. Fortunately, Dan was able to convince two to stay on. And he didn't ask me, but I figured he didn't want me anymore. I was surprised I lasted 10, now it's only supposed to be eight.
It's our whole bond program.
I know. In fact, I was, we were joking about the last meeting, about, I think Dan and I were the only ones in the room that were here at the beginning.
I'm pretty close.
Yeah, so anyway.
This is report number 38.
Yeah, well, I didn't write all of them, I only, only the last two years. Kevin did all of the rest of them.
Oh, no, I think this report is so great. I shared it with the climate committee, community committee, as like a way to report to the board. I think it's a great template, just of like, what, here's what you've been charged to do, and here's your observations.
All the credit goes to Mr. Young here, because he's the one that suggested this new format, which I was pleased with as well, because when I first took over the chair, I thought, is there, is there any specific way you'd like us to report things as opposed to us just kind of at random, kind of thinking about what these, what comes to mind? So yeah, this has been very helpful, provides some guidance. And it wasn't surprising when I read it, being, him being a planner, you know, I happened to be on the Platteville County Planning Commission, so it looked very, very similar to the way we see planning reports.
Well, land use terms have been all, all sense of the world now.
Anyway, so I was like, ah. Two other kind of shout outs, since we were really impressed with the process that was being utilized for Jefferson Public Outreach, that was a great process, and it, and it ultimately, I think, led to a, you know, very good recommendation. I mean, it was kind of an obvious one to me, but it just was great that it was validated by the process that you went through. Similarly, we were, I was pleased to hear that Creative Science's seismic upgrades was a median occupancy, which is not something that's been done much in the past. And having been on, having actually worked on the Oregon Sunnis Plan, this is a great step forward, and I would hope the district would continue to set those types of goals for your seismic improvements, because, anyways. And then last but not least, I just want to thank you for the opportunity. It's been a great 10 years. I'm surprised that you kept me around that long. But it's been fun working with staff, it's been fun watching the OSM team develop and become the first-rate organization that they are. And it's, and as I shared at the last meeting, early on in my, my career, when I was consultant, I actually worked on a lot of schools, high schools, junior highs, and colleges, whatnot. So it's kind of fun. I started out on schools and kind of ending my, my career with schools. So it's been a great run.
Well, your, thank you. Your expertise has been immensely useful, and just your dedication and commitment. And really, if you want to go out and see Benson, for example, I don't know if you've been in Lincoln?
I've been in Lincoln.
Okay. It's, we should, let's make sure that happens, and you should come too, Ryan, to get your feet wet.
Yeah.
Yeah. Big feet, bloody, I guess.
As they are the final product.
Say that again?
I say it's just as interesting to see the project during construction.
Oh, yeah.
See the final product, because I'm an engineer, and you build things, you want to see how things come together. So to me, that's just, just as interesting.
Yeah.
So yeah, I love the opportunity, and also Jeff and Cleveland, when you get around to it.
Yeah.
Open invitation.
Anyway, yes. Anyway, that's my report.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for indulging.
Fantastic.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Anybody have any, any questions before he goes? Comments?
Well, just, thank you, thank you for everything.
My pleasure.
All right, next, good night. All right, the last one is about VAC membership, and I'll just start, just, I really appreciate Tom, the time you spent here. I remember the very first VAC meeting, which, I don't know the date, but it's darn near was exactly 10 years ago. So I remember that meeting and all the expertise and the guidance that you gave me offline as well throughout the years is always very greatly appreciated. You're always really the steady hand on the committee, so we'll miss you for sure, so thank you. In your packets is a brief staff report about our VAC membership. We do have new individuals terming off, and we have some positions. We did do a public recruitment, and we did some targeted recruitment as well, which we continue to do, because we've filled some positions. But there are two committee members, as Tom, our friend, who have been on the committee for two years, Greg Gillerito and Norm Doughty. They have been very active, very supportive, high-quality feedback from both Norm and Greg, and we would love for them to continue on. And we would love for them to continue on with the committee. They're both willing to continue on as well. So we would like to recommend that they have a second appointment. And then we also have two new potential applicants, one who couldn't make it today. His name is Jonathan Tre, he works with Home4. By pure coincidence, I ran, I knew him 15 plus years ago when he was with Northwest Housing Alternatives. He has been around the affordable housing world and land trust world for a very long time, a very sharp individual. And then we have Ryan Kinsella, I think I.
Kinsella, yeah.
Thank you, sorry. Who is with Oregon Metro right now, has a lot of great background in capital projects and finance in particular. And I'll let Ryan talk a little bit about him.
Yeah, thanks for having me today. Again, Ryan Kinsella, and I'm currently the Director of Capital Asset Management at Oregon Metro. It's a position I started six months ago, but spent a good portion of my career at the city of Portland and was in the budget office for a number of years, worked with large infrastructure bureaus on development of their capital plans and the financing budgeting around that. And then eventually worked my way to the Deputy Director role at the Budget Office and then pivoted over to the Finance Director role at the Portland Bureau of Transportation, where I spent the last few years helping them manage their finances through a pretty precarious environment and the development of their overall capital plan. And then just recently started at Oregon Metro. So I'm really excited about the opportunity to join the Bond Accountability Committee. I've got to say, I mentioned at the end when we were having some of our initial conversations, I've been on the staff side a lot of accountability committees and have done the prep work and know just the importance of, as the committee comes together, there's some important conversations that happen there. But there's a lot of really critical work that goes to bring those conversations ahead and being able to have those conversations at the committee level. So I really do value sort of that, the critical part of the process and know that there's really good work and checks and balances throughout the development of capital plans and bond work. But having the committee's input and that external oversight for the part as well. So.
Thank you for your service.
Sorry, I didn't get a chance to work with you.
I'm sensing Andrew Scott sent you here.
Now we're at the Budget Office.
All right. Do we have to, do we recommend him to just board?
I think it'd be great if you guys would, if you made a recommendation, and then we would put it on the next board. Consider to judge.
For both of them?
Yeah. In the interdules for Norm's.
Yes.
So we're going to give a head nod as we bring to.
Fully supportive.
Support it. Don't get moved to the board. All right, sounds like that's it. Okay. Any questions, comments for, I don't want to mess up your name. Was it Ryan?
Ryan, yeah. Let's keep it there, Ryan.
Yeah, I'm looking at Ryan. Okay. Well, if any other questions, I have one announcement I'm going to talk about a little bit. So coming from the conversation we had last night, and we met with the board leadership and superintendent detectives.
E L T.
E L T folks. So one of the things that was recommended, that we bring the purchasing and contracting procurement stuff to this committee, and we can start diving into that information there. I'm going to try to work with Dan as far as what stuff we're going to need and then put it on the agendas to start having those conversations. And then as we get further down the road, we'll have a board work session around those and then see how that works into policy and all that stuff, so.
Dan, do you need Emily as part of that?
Yeah. And I'm happy to refer her.
I just wanted to make sure I just brought that up, so.
Yeah. And I don't know if you saw my note, but I would like to know more about the role of NAMAC and the contract that we have with them. They're, we do have a professional services contract with them to help us with some of the stuff. But to be honest, it hasn't really been utilized yet. So like I had suggested that they facilitate a work session, which would be great down the road. But if we're going to start here with kind of combing through the policies and areas where we can make change, you know, maybe we need to do a little groundwork first. But I'd like to know, you know, I'd like to see the scope, which I think I saw a long time ago when I was trying to get the contract put in place and then understand what they're doing or what they're not doing or what they could be doing.
And I was quite a little bit circled up with you, Dan, yet, that your email came up in the meeting this morning. We agreed that that would be put in the mix of a pretty wide ranging, multi-dimensional discussion. So that was noted in the meeting this morning.
So in terms of scope, I have sort of like two, two big areas. There is sort of the day to day contracts that cover a whole variety of things. It's on the facilities of bond side, and then it's all the professional service contracts also we have. So there's all that, and that seems one. And then we have our really big modernization contracts. And I'm curious, just because, just given the timing and the uniqueness of the Jefferson project, of better understanding like how exactly we're going to approach that, either differently than we approached other projects or not. Just it seems like now is the moment to have that conversation. But it seems somewhat different than the $500,000 contract for professional services, you know, type contract. It's just bigger and way more complex. So I'm wondering, is that, would that be within scope area of what?
Yeah, there was a way, so that'd be all inclusive of that, of those conversations. Construction, bidding, purchasing, contracting, and then the non-construction bidding and purchasing stuff. So we just want to look at the whole process as a whole and see, you know, where we're, see what it is. I think a lot of folks don't know exactly what that looks like, how it works, how it operates, how do you go from, you know, doing your solicitations all the way to getting awarded a contract? And I think, so I think as we look into the totality of the procurement process, then we can start getting into those more individual conversations around this contract versus that contract and going from there. But definitely it's a conversation that needs to be had when I look at the numbers, you know, and going based on the current rate that we've been going on. You know, and I mentioned this this morning, you know, we have almost $2.4 billion worth of contracts. And then when I broke it down by the numbers that I've seen from the reports, you know, we got around $394 million that's going to certify firms. Well, then that gets split up between minorities, women and merger small businesses as well. So that still leaves 2.8, almost $2 billion over $2 billion that's not going to certify firms. And so we are talking about, you know, the gaps, wealth gaps and education gaps. We'll never get close, closing those with these type of numbers. And so this is just from the preliminary numbers that I looked at from the report that you guys sent in. And I didn't want to go too much into it today. But, you know, we'll have those conversations. And then I did have a lot of questions, but I didn't want to bring you here, so I will send them out. And then we can kind of start that conversation moving forward.
When you think about a burn rate of nearly $40 million in three months, like that's an enormous economic impact. We're not going to continue at that pace, but still, it's a huge impact in our community, so.
Any other questions, comments? Anything good for the order?
Welcome, Ryan.
Any public comments?
There's not any public comments.
All right. We'll return the meeting almost at 5:05.